At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for December 9th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone is present, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from November 25th, 2019. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
On page three, it's a simple one, about three-quarters of the way down, the word should have been reinstated instead of restated. That's all I have. Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the bills. I have to abstain. There's a charge to Michigan Caterpillar.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address.
Yes, Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. I'm here tonight because I saw a Facebook post that, I happened to come over the Facebook today, that Lyon Township has gone to, has now completely gone to full-time service fire department, 365 days a year, seven days a week. And Maggie had brought it up at the last council meeting about possibly bringing Chief Vogel on as full-time. Granted, we might be only three square miles, but there is a lot of ground to cover in those three square miles. And it may look small, but it's really not. And I think that for the service of our residents and the people that work at the South Lion Fire Department that devote their hard time to make sure that we stay safe, I think I would like to see if council and the mayor would be entertained to the possible of making the South Lion Fire Department a full-time operation. I would, if the mayor and council are willing to entertain that idea and bring on Chief Vogel as full-time, I think it would be a huge service to our fire department, to the residents, and I think there would be enough community support for such an action. I can't thank our first responders enough, and they're just incredible, and we're losing them because they're not getting paid enough. And, you know, do we want to lose these great people just because they're not getting paid enough? I mean, value can't replace money. You can replace money, but you can't replace value. And training is a lot on these people, and it's not easy. I know I can't carry a 1,200-pound fire hose around, so I wouldn't move the next day. But anyway, I think that would be wonderful and entertaining. I also want to thank everybody that pulled off the Cool Yule. I thought it was absolutely brilliant. I think Heineman did a great job with the Christmas tree. I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer.
Yeah?
Oh, I said, "Thank you."
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry.
That's right.
Linda Ross, 373 Harvard, president of the Historical Society. Here for two reasons. First, to thank everyone who came out to support our 10th Annual Dulcimer Concert at the Village Saturday, December 1st, with the Village Strings Dulcimer Band. They always start our holiday off in getting us in the mood with their lively music, some sing-alongs, and a few jokes thrown in to keep the evening fun for everyone. The attendance for both performances was very good, and I hear a couple of our council people were there. We had a lot of our regular peoples, we had new people that were coming in, and one who just walked in off the street to see what was going on and stayed for the evening and enjoyed it very much. So, the band has already committed for next year, and we're looking forward to having them back. Next is the Cool Yule Christmas of the Village event that we had Saturday evening, and I'd like to thank the community for coming out and supporting our event at the Village again this year. We had a good crowd, and although there was a little confusion about the parade, everyone was excited when it showed up at the Village, even though it came from the wrong end. But I think the band was most excited because the band conductor commented that they don't usually get to see the parade because they're always in it. So, they were very excited about that. And kudos go out to Dana Johnston for the excellent job she did in getting participants for the parade this year. There was 32 this year versus 14 last year, so that was great for the community. And thanks to her family for all of the help they gave in organizing and keeping it moving smoothly. We'd like to thank the South Lion High School Band for being part of our event this year and for playing when Santa arrived. And they were a nice addition also, and we look forward to hopefully having them back next year. Thanks to Santa and Mrs. Claus for taking time out of their busy schedule to stop by our village and greet our visitors, light the tree, and listen to the requests from 80 children, visited them in the schoolhouse. Thank you to Mayor Pelchak for once again welcoming Santa and giving him the key to our fair city. To Pastor Mike Horlocker from the Presbyterian Church for announcing the winners of the gingerbread contest, the snowball throw, and the Christmas tree contest that was downtown. We're going to miss his participation and help next year as he's moving to Cadillac, and he's been a big part of our Cool Yule group for about eight years now. To Dennis Reymars for reading the night before Christmas, as Santa and his helpers got ready in the school. Thank you to the South Lion High School Unaccompanied Choir in the chapel. There was standing room only again this year. To the Center for Active Adults for the yummy cookies that they provided for the bake sale in the freight house. To Susan Martin and the Water Department for being part of our event this year and handing out a lot of goodies there for the visitors. To Craig Johnston, Larry Ledbetter, and Eagle Scout Joey Byer for putting up the lighted path to the village from the city. That was a great, a lot of people followed it up. To the DPW for setting up Santa's chair for us in the school, putting up Santa's tree, lighting it, and putting lights on the caboose wheels and the wreath on the gazebo. And to the Quanahs for having their tree sale again at the Village. We feel that it adds to the ambiance of the activities that are going on and brings visitors into the museum for us. And last, a very big thank you to all of the Historical Society members for their support and help with decorating the Village inside and out, and giving their time to the museum and buildings so they could be open to visitors for the last few weeks. This coming weekend is the last weekend we'll be open for the holidays, so we encourage people to stop by. If you need last-minute gifts, we have lots of things to pick from, and we have a lot of stocking stuffers. So, thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown this evening.
Well, again, everybody got the report from Paul. I'm going to just concentrate on two items. Basically, last week was a tremendous week. Last weekend was a wow weekend, and it started Friday. Friday, we had the media event. We wanted to pull that off. We had canceled that in November, but businesses asked for it, so we delivered. We had great attendance, good weather, newspaper on site with a photographer. We had photo ops and ribbon cuttings at five different businesses celebrating their building improvements, all historic building-related. We got an update on the final design and grand opening plans for the wine bar with its new name, The Corner Social. So, the name is official now, The Corner Social, for the wine bar. We got an update on the Lemon Trees Soft Opening, which will be the first week in January. They will have a grand opening probably early February, once they get just right. So, exciting to see that transformation of that building there. We got an update by the architect for two projects that are going to kick off, really take off in the spring and be finished in 2020. Certainly, the 121 East Lake, which is now the insurance, State Farm?
State Farm.
State Farm Insurance. And so, we've been working with the building owner and the architect, and so that will be another historic rehab. And then, the RCA Building, we learned some more details at the event with an opening next fall. So, it was a short and sweet event, and we're going to have more follow-up with internet articles in the Free Press and the Oakland Press as well. And a new story, I saw a couple council people posted that.
There were two of them.
Councilperson Dilgan Kennedy showed us, the Hometown Life article came out today. Was it today?
Yeah, two of them came out today.
Two of them came out today. Great, great. So, that was a great event. Cool Yule 2019, huge success, tremendous team effort, really. It was all about the team. So, after a late start with the event, it's really turned over to the city in late April and May, we had a difficult time getting info from the previous year, but we really cranked it up the past six to eight weeks. Businesses, residents, city, DTA pulled together to pull off a great day, just a wonderful day and evening of activities. And continuing the well-deserved list of thank yous, the special thanks to the DPW, Police and Fire, City Administration, and the DPW, I guess, would be the all-stars, because there wasn't anything, any challenge that they didn't meet for weeks in advance to prepare for this, and certainly all day on until about 2:00 in the morning after the event Certainly, we want to thank the Carl and Joanne Foundation and Jeff Heineman. Dana and Craig Johnson, what they did with that parade was astonishing. I mean, it was just phenomenal, fantastic job. Jim Hamadi and Tim Davids did a wonderful job with sponsorships, vendors, and really setting the groundwork with sponsors for next year, which was wonderful. So, we want to congratulate them. Jim didn't want to be named, but, oh, well, sorry, Jim. I think he did a great job, so. I also want to thank the businesses who stayed open. Most of our retailers stayed open. I think all of our retailers stayed open, and they had great success. I'll come back to that. The Historical Society and the Historical Commission, thank you for all of their activities. Great job at the Village. Churches and schools, wonderful events and activities. You know, the representation at the parade with those 36 units, people were just, you know, almost expecting it to be a lot shorter, but honestly, it's as good as any lighted parade anywhere. It doesn't have to have 50 or 60 units, but our 36-unit parade matched any anywhere, so it's good to be in that crowd. The crowd at the tree lighting itself was estimated at about 3,000, which is fantastic, great weather, wonderful weather. The vendors in Lafayette Street reported good sales, all of them. The fire pits in Lafayette Street were a huge hit and kept people there even an hour after the, and people shopping at the vendor tents for an hour after the tree lighting. First time for food trucks, at more than one food truck at a downtown event, we had three food trucks and an additional food sales table, and they all were very happy and want to come back. There were big lines at all four after the tree lighting. That's one of the biggest activity, but they had consistent activity all night. The beverage tent was extremely successful, well-run by Heineman and staff, volunteers, over 30 volunteers from the community, security by our police department, a great job by everybody. All the profits from that go back into the tree. The tree, the financing of the tree, the transport and the installation and the lighting, that's over $30,000 each year. So, all the funds from the beverage tent go to that. No public funds were used for the beverage tent or the band, just to clarify that. Again, downtown businesses reported great sales. Three of our businesses reported their biggest year ever for any single day, and some of them, I think there were three or four that stayed open until 10:00. They weren't going to shush anybody out, they were going to just stay open, so. So, that was great. Just a couple final comments. The partnership between the city, the DDA, and the Carl and Joanne Foundation, it's very innovative, and I think it's an outstanding partnership, and I think we're learning and will continue to learn to improve that relationship in the future. Again, it's a huge team effort by not only the city, DDA, and the foundation, but all the many people, the workers, the volunteers. I mean, again, we have to stress this is a team effort, not any one group, not any one person. But the biggest winner of all, I think, the biggest thank you goes to the people of South Lion who came out and supported all this. Just a wonderful evening, just phenomenal, phenomenal night. So, next year, next year, we have an opportunity to plan with a full year, with all of the participants represented, to start in January with a critique, and this is the first time in about four or five years that we can start with a full year of planning. So, I think the consistent effort will lead to a lot of additional improvements, continue the wonderful things that did happen, and maybe add some other items. So, we'll be looking forward to that in January. But before we end the year, there's one more big hurrah. That's December 31st. Again, all the proceeds from the new South Lion Eve event will go to the tree and for the large tree for next year, which really is, it's all about community celebration and economic development, doing these things for the community and for our business community as well. It's a wonderful cultural, social, and economic development all at once. So, I think our partnership to pull that event off is wonderful, and I think the South Lion Eve from 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM, with McCatty Street closed, the fire pits will come back on McCatty Street. I think there'll be a wonderful event, and I'm looking forward to that. They're still looking for volunteers, because they need at least 30 volunteers. I think they're not going to get everybody back that put in long hours last Saturday night, but they need about 30 volunteers. And again, looking for a great new year with a wonderful new tradition for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Dil.
Just really quickly, I think this kind of goes along with this, and I know you've seen this already, but I know when you talk about the things you're going to do coming up, and I know there's sometimes you'll get some negative feedback from people on just things that are going around downtown, or things aren't going fast enough. So, on Revitalize or Die, I was reading this article, I was talking to Councilmember Kibble about it as well, and I just wanted to quickly go through a couple points of it, because I think it's really pertinent to what you're talking about. And they had a guest article, and it was, "Here's How One City Manager Revitalized Downtown and Restored Community Pride on a Tiny Budget." And as you go through this, they talk about downtown suffering from sprawl, and how you've got to keep the police cruisers gassed up, and you can't afford to do things downtown. So, what this woman did is, one, she started a farmer's market, and she thought it filled a void downtown to get the community out walking around. Two, she got the business community together and started having business meetings once a month at a coffee shop. And three, she started having events, but regular events that people could depend on. And I thought this was really interesting, because as people sometimes are negative about, you know, things not going fast enough, this is somebody who's being held up as doing an amazing job in their city, and I'm looking at this and thinking that's exactly what we're doing here. And the final thing that she said is that the community started seeing some positive changes, and with that community comes pride, and I'm really starting to see that. I noticed it, normally you get a little more negative comments when you post something about an event or something that's going on, and I keep seeing people posting, "I'm so proud of my city, I'm so excited to be downtown and see what my city's doing," and I just think it's really exciting, and I just want to say congratulations, everybody, pulling that off. And they should do an article on us next. That's all. And just thank you to everybody, and especially Dana, too, I wanted to mention.
Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Bob, I just wondered about the tent that's out there. Is it going to stay up through New Year's Eve?
No, the tent company, the insurance policy that that tent company has, because of weather, if it were to snow, it would damage the tent and possibly break the poles, bend the poles. So, they're taking it down probably within the next two days, and then bring it back a couple days before New Year's Eve.
So, one suggestion that I would like to see maybe in the future, if we're going to do the big tent, maybe during the day, we can allow vendors into it, maybe bring it up for small business Saturday, put the tent up, let vendors be in there, just to get them more, a winter farmer's market. It'd be a little bit of a spin on that, you know?
Sure. It's something to look at.
Yeah, we always need to be a step ahead.
I don't know if we can put it up a week before, but we'll look at all that.
But putting it up for a day, you know, or we've already got it up all day long on that day of the event, let's think about how can we be a step ahead of the communities around us? And we have a farmer's market, like Lisa was saying, so let's bring our farmer's market into the winter. I don't think there's any town around us that does that.
Sounds like a good idea. We'll see if we can pull it off.
Throwing it out there.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to take on to what Lisa has said. I think what is changing clearly is that we have a management team in place that is, and I think I talked about this at the last meeting, is far more willing to, you know, think outside the box, do things outside the box that maybe we wouldn't have done five or six years ago. This Cool Yule never would have happened like this five years ago. I mean, I can tell you that right now. It never would have happened. But it happened this weekend, and it was a tremendous success. It's not only people, and I've said this before, South Lion, the downtown, is not just a downtown for South Lion. It is a downtown for Green Oak, for Salem, for Lyon Township, and I'm going to tell you, there were a lot, I was at several events that, I was not there for the tree lighting, I was another place, prior commitment, and everybody was talking about, "We need to get over to South Lion," and these were Lyon Township, these were Milford people, these were people from all over, because we want to see that tree getting lit. So, I think the enthusiasm is building because we're doing some very creative activities. I also want to know, are you going to have a breakdown meeting where you're going to sort of sit down, and I think this is what you're...
January, early January, yes.
I think this is what you're really good at and other, maybe in the past haven't been good at, is that you are willing to sit down and listen to the voice of the people, you are willing to listen to some of the criticisms and say, "Okay, how can we improve upon this? Is this a legitimate criticism, or is this just somebody who's barking?" And I think that your tolerance of other opinions is what is making and involving this into a great event. Last, I want to mention about Brian at State Farm Insurance, and this is a credit to you. You know, Brian's been in this town for a long time, and he's the owner and the agent over at the State Farm Insurance. Fabulous guy, dedicated man to the downtown. He could have bailed out in 2008, 2009, 2010, and he stayed in this town. And he is just probably one of the top agents for State Farm in the downtown area. He has stayed in this town, and when I saw the architectural plans on last Friday of him saying, you know, he's buying in, I think everyone in this community needs to stop in to the State Farm Insurance business downtown, shake hands with Brian, and thank him for what he's going to be doing next spring. He doesn't have to do that, and he is doing it, and he is becoming another piece to the puzzle. And I think that's because of your leadership and your encouragement and your vision, and I just, I can't thank you enough, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can't thank you enough.
Anyone else have anything for Bob tonight? Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Happy holidays, because we're not going to meet again, are we? Everybody have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the fire chief report this evening with Chief Vogel.
Very quick, the ladder truck is back, working great. We used it at a couple incidents already this week. It also did the parade. Worked perfect. Cool Yule went without a glitch, except we got really busy. We caught a fire in the city during Cool Yule, and it kind of kept us busy, plus we had a couple other medicals, so we also got a couple complaints that were very small that I guarantee we'll get all this figured out next year, and we'll be more prepared. And lastly, we've been working on budget sessions. All my staff are working on it, and hopefully we'll have that ready for you soon.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone with anything for Chief Vogel tonight? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Head over to Chief Sovick with the police chief report tonight.
Okay, you guys remember when we were preparing for this year's budget, I came to you requesting $4,800 for the replacement of the shotguns and tactical accessories. I also try to do our best as far as getting rid of some of the old weapons that we had and tracking them down and everything. So, when it was all said and done, we only had to dip into that account for $113.90, so kudos to Sergeant Baker for the endless months and the paperwork that is associated with these weapons to get that done, so good job with that. I finally received all of the information, the IT companies, breakdown of our system, and sent it to our watch guard, who is going to be our in-card camera provider, so they have all of our information. We're waiting for a response from the project manager as far as shipment on those items and the in-house installation and training from them as well. One of our cadets, Will Kelly, is going to be leaving us. His last day is going to be next Monday. He's going to be attending the Schoolcraft Police Academy, which starts January 6th, so I want to thank him for his service. And our new cadet, Allison Saicon, just started today, and I will introduce you to her at a future meeting in January, if they have her. She's an Eastern Michigan student, but I'll share more with her later. When we arrest somebody for drunk driving through defense of the felony, we, with certain criteria, are allowed to forfeit their vehicles. Unfortunately, we don't forfeit very, very nice vehicles, they're kind of beaters and in bad shape. However, we were able to auction off two of the vehicles that we had, and we took in a total of $845, but we have to split that with the prosecutor's office. So, a little bit of extra work and paperwork, we brought in $422.50, which goes to the general fund for the auctioning off of those two vehicles for the felony drunk driving offenses. We raised $430 for the Wigsford kids during the No Shave November, so it's good foundation. And if you follow us on Facebook, you know that we had to retrieve some guinea pigs from a caddy park, and it was like herding cats, they were saying. It was about 45 minutes to an hour long, those little critters are pretty fast, but we were able to save all those, and they're being cared for, so just wanted to share that with you, and happy holidays.
Thanks, chief. Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. Do we know who let those guinea pigs out in the park, and is there any type of...
We do not. We have suspicions that maybe the person that called to report it maybe, but, you know, you don't really see those out in the cold like that. They can't, you know, they can't take those temperatures, so we don't know the circumstances, and no one's come forward and shared that with us. But the important thing is they were saved, and apparently there was a fourth one that was found as well, so they're all back together and being cared for.
Wonderful.
They're all adopted.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. Also, can you send Sergeant Baker over to clean out some other closets and see what else we can find?
Yeah, seriously.
Thanks.
Anyone else with, anything for Chief Sovick tonight? Thanks, chief. At this time, we're going to welcome our friends from the Center for Active Adults.
I'm Catherine Rivera, the director of the South Lion Center for Active Adults. Thank you for allowing me to come today and talk to you a little bit about the center, and to thank you at the city council for continuing to support this center. When I became the director two and a half years ago, I knew it was a strong, vibrant center, and that it was a blessing to so many people in your community, but it didn't take long for it to become a blessing to me. I get to wake up every day and go to a job that I absolutely love. Not many people are blessed to have that in their lives, so thank you all for continuing to support me in this role. I am blessed to have both of my team members here with me, so that's a statement right there in itself, that they would come on their own time to support me while I have a moment to speak to you. So, thank you both, Rita and Carrie, and my members who are here to support me as well. So, thank you all. A little bit about the center, for those of you who don't know, we started in Bartlett Elementary School, a little unused room in 1976, and this continued to grow into our current location. In 1990, when the high school was built, they built a center for us as well. us as well. We are funded by our community partners, the City of South Lyon, Lyon Township, Green Oak Township, and the South Lyon School System. They provide wonderful things for us, our tech, our custodial, our building engineering, all of the things that make the center be able to survive. We could never be an independent building supported just by membership fees. It would not happen. So the school, while we are independently funded, the partnership is something that is invaluable. We could never put a dollar amount on that. We are also supported by fundraising and donations. About 20% of our operating budget is fundraised through fundraising and donations throughout the year in the center, and our class and program fees as well. We have about 3,800 members in the center currently. 2,200 of them live in the City of South Lyon. And we continue to grow every day. I don't think there is about a day in the center where we don't have someone coming in, signing up to be a member of the center. So who are these wonderful community members? They're adults 50 and better who live in Lyon Township, Green Oak Township, the City of South Lyon, and the surrounding areas. We do have people who come from Canton, Milford, Northville, all over the place to come participate in our programs. I think says a lot about our center and what we have to offer the community. Who are they? They live here. Most of them live independently in their own homes. A lot of people think that, people come to the senior center, live in assisted livings or nursing homes and things like that. Our members are independent active adults, 50 and above, living in the community. Most of them, a lot of them have lived in the South Lyon area for a large portion of their lives and have other family members and students in the local area. And we have new community members moving every day. You all know how fast this city is growing. And a lot of them are looking for ways to stay active in the community, and we have a lot to offer. So every time someone moves into the community, they very quickly tend to find us and sign up to participate. What we offer our members, we have a variety of fitness programs for all skill levels. My favorite is the 12 yoga classes a week that we offer, day and evening. So come do some yoga five days a week with us. And it is the best yoga price in the state. Find me another $5 yoga class. I'll meet you there, but it's a really great addition to our community. We have swim, we have pickleball, walking club, Tai Chi, Qi Gong, and many more. Creative arts, including acrylic painting, wood carving, greeting card making, and music programs. Lots of fun and games. Of course, we have bingo, playing cards, Scrabble, and a book club. We try to always offer educational informational sessions and materials valuable to our community members. Travel opportunities, local, national, and abroad. We're planning trips to New York City and to Iceland, I believe Greenland, one of those we just had a big program on. And we have some of our members heading out to Alaska in the spring on a two-week cruise that they are doing through the center as well. Coming up in January, we have our AARP tax program. So last year, we provided tax aid to almost 250 local community members free by certified tax professionals. We also have durable medical good closets. So if you're in need of a walker, wheelchair, bedside commode, things like that, the members can come borrow them from us for your charge. We do always take donations gratefully. But then when they're done, they just ask that they return them to us, and so we can lend them out to someone else in the community. We save thousands of dollars for our local members every year just by not having to buy a $60 walker, a $75 wheelchair. When your family members are sick, that adds up really quick. So and also, they feel good, they don't need it anymore, they give it back to us, we find a new home for it. I think the biggest thing that we've been focusing on this year is wellness. Acupuncture, massage, group meditation, blood pressure checks, hearing screens, flu shots are all different programs we've offered this year, and we'll continue to move forward with next year. I think the biggest thing that our center offers is community and companionship. The city is very, very blessed to have a community center like this locally to them. There are not that many true community centers anymore around. People just come to my center, have a cup of coffee, sit with their friends, talk. They meet for lunch. They make new friends. They talk to people they've known for 60 years. I don't know many people who are in their 80s and still meet their high school friends. That happens every month in my center, and it's amazing and a blessing. So how do you become a member of my center? Well, it's free to all residents of the City of South Lyon, Green Oak Township, and Lyon Township, if you're over 50. Just come on in, fill out a membership form, and we'll get you on our roster, on our mailing list for our newsletter. And it's $37 a year to join if you don't live in those municipalities. How else can you get involved? Volunteer your time. Come hang out with us. We always will find something for you to do. We'll put you to work. Share your talent. I know a lot of people have secret talents that they don't really know how to express or where they can put to good work. I just found out my yoga instructor plays the clarinet. So guess what she's going to be doing? Playing the clarinet. You can always sponsor a program or event, or advertise your business in our newsletter. It goes out to all of those local, direct, right to the community. So you know you're going to hit the people who are looking for your services. And spread the word. Tell everybody about us. Just let us know where they are, how you can find us. We are attached to the South Lyon High School. We have our own wing. It's door 32. And we will let you in and give you a tour and show you all around. So thank you for your time again. I just am so blessed to be a part of this center and so proud of it that every day, once I wake up with a smile on my face, knowing I get to go there and that I get to be with all those wonderful people. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Actually, I just want to pass along a testimonial that was passed along to me this morning. I was meeting with the residents over at Colonial Acres. I have a husband and wife that just recently moved to the city from Lyon dot, and they were raving about the center. He says they absolutely nothing like that in Lyon dot, and they are enjoying the heck out of it. So keep up the good work.
It's a special place.
Yep.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. One, what times are you open?
We're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:30 are our operating hours. We have off-site programs, like our pickleball is in the evenings on Mondays and Wednesdays. Walking club is Monday through Friday from 4:15 to 6:00. And we have our evening yoga as well, two days a week.
And then, what was my other thing? Oh, just like the kind of volunteers that you're looking for normally, like what do you normally need?
Well, we always are in need to help getting our newsletter put out. This time of year, we always are taking bake sale volunteers. We have our bake sale that's happening today, tomorrow, and Wednesday at the center. We have needs to put gift baskets together when we have special events. It's always great to have a separate second set of hands or fourth, fifth set of hands to help get the program running and get cleaned up and things like that.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
You had made mention of taking donations for the equipment. Is that a financial thing or do you also take equipment as a donated product?
We take in lots of medical, durable medical loan equipment. So we're really a revolving door for that. We don't purchase equipment or stock a certain items, different things. It's what people from the community have brought in, we share back into the community.
Might be able to help you there. Great.
Anyone else have anything for Catherine tonight?
Thank you, though.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Really quick, we cover that as our tech department, and it is always a joy to be over there and work with them. It's really an incredible center. If you're over the age of 50 and you have not checked it out yet, I would highly, highly recommend it. Some great people over there doing some great things in the community. So we'll move on to new business tonight. Number one, purchase of new offset well and pump drilled and installed by Peerless Midwest at McCatty Park Wellhouse number four.
Mr. Mayor, each year, Peerless Midwest has contracted to evaluate a wide variety of these pumps and motors for the water distribution system. This year, they discovered that we had a problem with well number four. Discovery led to the camera inspection and further identified crack casing, forcing the city to abandon the well. As you know, the service led to an emergency drilling and installation of new well to meet capacity. We brought this and discussed this at a prior council meeting. The combined invoices total $132,720 for the completed abandonment and the installation of new offset well pump and motor. There's a budget amendment on tonight's agenda also, which corresponds with this particular item. We do have the supporting materials of the documents that do show the invoices. And the request tonight is approve the purchase for the services performed by Peerless Midwest to pull and inspect the pump, motor, and further drill and install the new well number seven at a total price of $132,720. We have two other individuals here, myself, Patricia Finance, as well as Doug Varney, who's here to answer any questions for you tonight regarding that particular installation.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase for services rendered by Peerless Midwest for the maintenance and inspection of well number four pump and motor that then led to the installation of the new offset well for the combined amount of $132,720 from Lyon item. 592.556-931 is outlined in the invoice.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for being here. New business number two this evening is budget amendments. Paul?
Yes, we have several items that we've outlined for you this evening. Patricia Turner and our finance and benefits administrators here answer any questions that you have. There's a budget explanation for the general fund and water and sewer fund amendments. Request tonight is to approve the proposed budget amendments as outlined within your information. We've also updated some information to further clarify some things. We realized there were a couple mistakes that were made within the documents today, and there was additional information to hopefully better understand what had actually taken place throughout the year.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Patricia. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed budget amendments as revised on December 9th, 2019.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the proposed budget amendments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for being here tonight, Patricia. New business number three this evening, acceptance of the MMRA grant for an active shooter kit project. Chief Vogel?
Real quick, back in August, we did a joint training with the South Lyon Police Department, and I recognized the need for some active shooter kits. I then also met in November with the high school SRO, and he also stressed it, the need that we might need. So I've been working, and I found, after a meeting with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management when he came here, he highly recommended I put in for this grant, and we got it. It's a 75% matching. Total of $524.62 would be coming out of my Lyon item 101-335-977. The rest would be paid for by the grant. There's, a lot of people don't realize this, but there's some interesting things happening next year with presidential debate in Ann Arbor. I can't get into it much now, but there's going to be a lot of moving parts with that. And I think, I really think this is something that we could use. A, we have multiple high schools, and possibility is there unfortunately these times.
Councilmember Walton, you had something?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion to approve that we accept the grant and that we pay the other $524.62 out of the equipment account 101-335-977.
My support.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble?
I just wanted to say that the preparation, being prepared for something like this is certainly in our best interest, and to have somebody else picking up three quarters of the cost is a huge step in the right direction.
Yeah, he highly recommended this one. We had just recently gotten the TIC grant from them, the thermal imaging camera. And I didn't think there would be another chance for another grant, but he, you know, he said, South Lyon's one of their favorite cities. He really encouraged me to just keep, you know, plugging away. And this is one that he said would really reduce the city's liability. And it's not just for schools. I don't think that, you know, this could be utilized in any different type of-
Right. Well, they've really been good advocates for us.
Yeah, I mean, this gentleman, he was great. He came to my station after we put a truck through the door. And not only did he look at the damage, but he also wanted to talk about our needs, the liability reducing, and it was a really great meeting. So-
That's terrific.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. As Councilmember Kibble said, we always thank how much you are looking ahead and always be prepared. And you have found so many grants for our city along with the city manager's help. So just thank you again. We really appreciate you taking care of us.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Rob, I just, you know, want to echo the comments that have been made. Congratulations. Great job. And keep plugging away, like you said.
We got a big one coming this year, in 2020, that we're going for. So fingers crossed.
Good, good. Well, we have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Dill, to approve the grant from Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Chief. New business number four this evening, HRC Water Capital Improvement Plan Proposal Approval.
Mr. Mayor, in April, the city approved HRC to prepare a capital improvement plan for the water treatment plant. On November 25th, they presented the study to City Council. And at tonight's meeting, we're requesting that City Council officially accept the study and approve Phase One design of the plan at a cost not to exceed $328,000. We have a letter attached dated December 4th, 2019, that outlines a capital improvement plan. We also mentioned also regarding your copy of the capital improvement plan, which was provided within your last packet. And the request tonight is approve the appropriation of the amount not to exceed $328,000 for the completion of Phase One of the CIP for the water and treatment plant. And as added item, which was added to your particular document regarding the budget amendments and other budget items tonight, it is coming out of account 592-452-802, which we allocated $1 million this year for the contracted services associated with water storage tank and treatment facilities. So HRC has two representatives here, Roland Alex and Jesse Vanderrik, are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the meeting.
Councilmember Kennedy, you had something?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the appropriation of an amount not to exceed $328,000 for the completion of Phase One of the capital improvement plan for the water treatment plant from the account as noted by the city manager.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I was going to second it.
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I thank you very much. When we approve this, I just want to know if you're going to keep us appraised of who the contractor is, since Oakland County won't be the director and overseer of this particular job, who the bid winner and the contractor is going to be that handles the bonding or, you know, utter me what a buck stops, they're in charge of it. Hope you keep us appraised of that and keep us tuned up with what's the progress as we're going along, okay? And we know what it's going to cost, okay? And we know it's necessary. And I hope we can stay with the timetables and progress, and I hope that I can be of any help to you with my background information at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
At our last discussion, you had suggested that the idea, I'd like to find out whether or not there's any interest in anybody else on City Council to giving consideration to the south side of Dorothy for the location of the new storage tank. You had suggested the complication of having a water line crossing over a sewer line. It happens. I mean, it happens all over the place. So since it's in existence, the notion of that being able to be engineered so that it can end up- of that being able to be engineered so that it can end up cohabitating safely, I can't help but think that that is something that's certainly doable by your engineering firm. And my rationale for that is, that is an area that is benign. We have very little use for putting anything active over there. It doesn't hold the same purchase that the parking lot does right now in the active side of Dorothy. You know, if we do use it for secondary parking for a really big event, there's always the jeopardy of people walking across the street in the midst of traffic going down Dorothy. It just seems to me that if there's any, if there's enough people that have an interest in entertaining the idea of whether it's doable and what the financial impact of that change would end up being, I would like to end up having that take place now rather than downstream where, you know, you guys are working on the finals for everything, and then this issue is presented. So I just wanted to bring that up now while everyone's, this is a fresh issue, so please weigh in on it. I mean, if you guys are just adamantly seeing this as being a resistant position, I'd like to know exactly what the real obstacles are, save for that Eagle concern about crossing a sanitary line.
I can speak to that. In the initial sighting, the objective was to essentially accommodate the most ideal location considering all variables involved, so.
Ideal for security and some of the amenities of the plant, right.
We have the environmental regulations regarding the existing sanitary out in Dorothy Street. We have the additional costs that would be associated, of course, with the mechanical elements of going further distance, of course. We have the security issue with two separate sites now. And we also have something that didn't come up last time, which is, the city does currently have that piece of property there, and the zoning, I don't believe on that side of the road is suited for this, so we would probably have to look at a zoning change.
Oh, it's a park.
For future, the city essentially loses out on the opportunity for that, I will call it a clear parcel, a clear parcel that's not adjacent and connected to an industrial parcel. So there are some tangibles and some intangible elements that really need to be considered. The most concrete, of course, is the financial, the increase in costs of putting it over there, the feasibility to be permitted even from Eagle. And of course, we might be having this discussion regardless, should the soil conditions show up. Again, based on the information that Councilman Richards provided from a historical perspective, although he believes there's no peat there, hopefully the fill that went in there is suitable. So we could be back here regardless if we find out that the constructibility in that location that's currently proposed exceeds the cost to try to go across the street. And quite frankly, I would like to start with the geotechnical investigation at the existing site, and let that be the initial driver as to whether or not the cost to mitigate construction of the foundation of that location would be basically a wash or even more expensive than going across the street. And then I believe it would be appropriate at that time to approach Eagle on the potential for doing that with a basis and a justification for why we can't put it where currently shown. So it's not...
One consideration you haven't factored in there, though, is the benefit of having more active space on the active side of our park. You know, you can't, you don't assign a dollar value to that necessarily, but certainly as far as functionality of our existing parkland, if that active area becomes more of a benefit to the park, you know, we'll never end up gaining that from the area that's across the street. That's all.
Understood.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. I do not believe that the residents of Hampton Square condominiums want that in their backyard. I'm just going to...
Well, do you think that the people on McMunn are going to want that in their backyard?
That was stated five years ago, that it was going to be put into that parking lot, and that's why we have not maintained that parking lot.
No.
That's exactly why I ran for council.
Oh.
Was that parking lot, and why has it been maintained, and I was told at that time, had been maintained because we were going to put a water tower there. So.
I've been here a long time.
I'd like to see that in that parking lot before we put it in the backyard of the residents of Hampton Square.
I would like to weigh in that when we, 19 years ago, when we did expand the filtration capacity to make sure we had our high-quality, consistent water delivery, that parking lot at that time was specifically discussed for a location for softening, a claricon type of design. But the community decided that filtration was what the community was going to provide, that softening was going to be left up to the homeowners, should they want to have that component added to their individual homes for water treatment. So that lot has been discussed for other unit processes in the past.
Well, that may have been the six years that I was off between a few stints out here, so.
That may be.
Yeah.
But I think they're all valid questions, and certainly the constructibility should drive it initially, and then we know we have an alternate location, so you will be kept apprised of the progress and the decisions as being made. And again, the geotechnical evaluation will really give us our first indicator, and we'll come back and give regular reports. And just to follow up on Councilman Richards' comment on who's the contractor, you know, the scope in here includes the design through bidding. And once we advertise and bid this project, we're going to have a public bid opening here with the city clerk, and we're going to evaluate those bids to ensure that we have the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and that will come back to council for an authorization to proceed with award of that contract based on the appropriate insurance or receipt of the insurance and bonds. So you absolutely will have a final say and be educated on the whole bid process as well.
Just to, if I could just finalize, the only reason I'm bringing that up right now is because if there's not another, if there's not interest in this, a majority interest, it really isn't worth pursuing, but I wanted to give people a chance to kind of think it over and find out whether or not they had an interest in that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Understood.
Councilmember Kurtswell, I'm going to go to Councilmember Richards first, and then I'm going to come over to you. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're most concerned about is the here and now, okay, of course, as we're kept right on point with that. But just to let you know, a historical fact, that from the time my father sold that land to the city, when I would have been about eight years old, okay, where are you talking about? The south side of Dorothy Street, which Dorothy Street wasn't there, okay? Fifty to sixty years ago, we had circuses that came to town, and that's where they set up. We also had churches, tent shows, that showed up for evangelical services and such, as that showed up on the other side, over there on the south side. Balloon landings and takeoffs and all that kind of thing went on both sides of the creek, okay? Some of it in that spot. So that property has been utilized many years ago, over the years, okay? It has served a purpose as a community center, and it drew people into town, okay, for the things that went on there. Granted, it sits vacant now and doesn't do much, but we have to move forward with what we're most concerned about, with economics and getting this water tower here. When I was on Parks and Recs, it was my vote that changed that site to where it is, the tank is now, in 1973 or something like that, '74, okay? Because we had voted to approve an underground, a flat, a flat water tank below ground level with tennis courts or something like that on top of it. And Mr. Beebe, the director of DPW and Water Works at the time, said it would cost us $350,000, a half a million dollars more to put that tank on the other side, okay, from where it is right now, okay? So that's why the tank was put there where it is. And something like that could be done, okay, and still utilize the property, but it would be more costly, and if this is the best way, then I'm all in favor of it.
One thing, it would be more costly, and you're right, back in the '70s, there was a fair amount of water storage tanks that were clean, finished water storage tanks that were placed below ground. That's no longer an allowable construction procedure.
Oh, really?
No, sir. Finished water cannot be stored underground and pumped anymore, it must be above grade. That's changed, yeah. So we used to look at that to try to, you know, remove the aesthetic, but it's not permissible anymore, so it would have to be above ground.
Councilmember Kurtswell, did you second the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Kennedy first, since he made the first motion, then I will come to you next. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, I agree with Mr. Vander Creek here on some of the statements that he's made. It's a question of wants versus needs. I think the decision's going to be made on the analysis of the core samples, because it could end up being that the, if the core sample from the parking lot is such that it's not capable of supporting that weight, and it's going to be more economical to place it across the street, then that's probably where it should be placed, as opposed to adding additional expense to, you know, excavate the unstable ground and replace it with a more suitable foundation. Secondly, the other thing that you did bring up is the fact that there are opportunities across the street on Dorothy. There's been discussion, that could be an area where we construct a pavilion and a parking lot for the benefit of park residents, that they could end up renting that for various events, and again, it could provide additional parking for things like Depot Day or for vendors that are there during Depot Day and other events that take place in the village. So there are a couple of things in motion. I think everything is dependent on what the analysis of the core samples actually shows in order to make the best decision on where to place that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just as a point of suggestion, I was just going to recommend that I would be willing to entertain the gentleman's discussion regarding, we're talking about the relocation that would be of well two A, is it?
Correct.
Onto Dorothy, which is a different topic than what is before the mayor now, so I would maybe ask that we move forward on what is pending, and then I would be willing to discuss it if the mayor is agreeable during the budget section, because that would require additional monies. And I also have an additional water department issue that I wanted to bring up during the budget, so that might be...
I'd like to answer your question, Councilperson Kurtswell. You can see in the clarifications, item number three, we did make reference to the design and permitting efforts as related to, we didn't specifically state out well two, but we did say construction of the new groundwater well supply. And again, while we didn't include that in this, there's a specific reason for that, because we don't know where that would be. So what we offer to do here is essentially, I will create a separate account number, and I will work directly with Doug and Ron Beeson to coordinate with Eagle to locate the potential additional well site location, perhaps in the park somewhere, likely further to the east, because most of them are concentrated on the west side of the park. But we just propose to do that as a time and material, just to help out, meet with Eagle, go out and look in the field, and if they come up with a reasonable approach to where they feel that should go, then we'll come back to you and say, this is where they're talking about putting it. Here's basically the budget, because now we know how we're going, what it's going to take to get water from point A to point B, and put together a schematic and actually show you what we believe the budget would be to move forward with that element of work. Now, saying that, you saw the drilling of, that you approved the budget amendment tonight for just an exterior well, was about $132,000 and change there.
$132,000.
So again, remember, that was just outdoor well and a motor. When we do an outdoor well, a new wellhouse altogether, it's going to be a wellhouse fully enclosed, so the cost, you're right, is going to be a factor of two, three times that drilling cost. So it is going to be scoped out as a separate item of work, but we feel it needs to go on concurrently, given the, really the importance of maintaining that well production capacity.
That's because you're doing the soil samples.
Okay, great. Does anyone have anything else for... Jesse, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kurtswell, to approve the appropriation of an amount not to exceed $328,000 for the completion of Phase One of the SIP for the water treatment plant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for being here tonight, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Jesse.
New business number five this evening, donation acceptance policy. Paul?
Tonight, I, earlier this year, I discussed with council that I was working on a city of South Line donation acceptance policy. This policy establishes guidelines, standards, and procedures for acceptance and documentation of donations to the city. The city desires to encourage donations while at the same time considers the impacts some donations may have on the city, including aesthetics, ongoing maintenance, and operational costs. Tonight for you, I have for you a copy of the donation acceptance policy and a donation acceptance form. These are just in draft form. I wanted you to review these particular documents and make recommendations on approving this or moving this forward. We do have, every once in a while, somebody will ask us regarding donating a particular park bench, they want to donate a tree, and we want to ensure that what they are donating, the location they'd like to donate it, and how they are recognized for something like this, is following a particular form and process, and that's why I'm bringing this all before you this evening.
Councilmember Kivel, go ahead.
It all seems perfectly reasonably laid out, so I just soon make the motion that we... Oh, is this an action item for tonight?
I don't believe so.
No, it's not. It was really for discussion.
Okay, just discussion, yeah. All this stuff makes perfect sense, so, I mean, if we're getting a donation from something that we have absolutely no use for, we're not benefiting ourselves, so, you know, the idea that everybody has to meet a criterion that is an assist to us to be able to give a donation, I think that's only reasonable, so.
Anyone else with feedback? Councilmember Dill?
I was just wondering on page one and two, where you have the blanks, are we, you're still considering that, or?
Yeah, because we weren't really sure what the dollar amount should be. This was, for me, it was just a process when people were discussing it. Now, if you recall, years ago, certain communities were being offered a donation of a particular statue by a local star, and nobody wanted it. And it was, you know, what did we place a value on this particular amount, or on this particular item? We've had discussions regarding people that wanted to donate park benches, and say, okay, what kind of park bench? Well, I saw one at the hardware store, and it was $47, and I can get it to you by next week, and we would like something to last a number of years, more than just one or two, and ongoing maintenance and ask for replacement, because the ones that you see within the parks are valued at several hundred dollars, and we want to look at that. Sometimes people want to donate, you know, have monetary donations as well. So I think establishing a policy, what you'd like to see actually brought before you, we could establish a committee to look at some of these things. We could handle most of this stuff in-house, and we could report back to you, who just had a donation regarding a particular location for a tree or something like that, because I really don't want to get into the minutia, and council's approving the donation of a three-inch caliber tree, and whether it's located 17 feet from the historical village or 28 feet, it's not something we really need to get into. But I am kind of looking for feedback and what your thoughts are regarding this, because I did bring it up at an earlier date.
Councilmember Walton?
I just would like the document to be reviewed. It looks like we go from section five to section seven.
Yes, that was our mistake. We definitely, has to change at the page, so we apologize for that.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, it has happened in the past that somebody donated something that nobody was properly informed of, okay? For instance, there's some gravestones in the cemetery, and I've tried for years to find out exactly where they came from, okay? And I won't mention any names or anything at this time, but I'm just saying, we were at a loss, okay, to find out where they came. I tried, and I couldn't find it, and that's rare, if I can't find it. Also, there's one beautiful bench, as beautiful as it may be, a historical site, he was never informed who the person was it was dedicated to on the plaque over there, right in front of our garden that's over there. of the, our garden that's over there. Beautiful as it is, and it's got a base underneath it, we don't, we never knew who that person was that's on that plaque, and, okay, we weren't alerted that it was going to be put there, who the person was and how they relate to Four Seasons Garden Club or the City of South Line.
And I think having this policy in place will assist with that, just as if somebody wants to donate one within the park, we would talk with the park, Parks and Rec Commission, and talk with them and say, "Okay, do they have ideas on where they'd like to locate a bench, and then we could advise those individuals, because these are the particular locations," or talking with the Historical Society. So, I think that brings up a very good point.
Yeah, some of this stuff has happened in the past. Thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
On the form, I was just wondering, do you want to have somewhere on there that is it, indicates if someone is donating something, if it's designated or undesignated? You know, if they, you were talking about designated when a donor specifies for a particular department. Should there be something on here, or maybe I'm missing it, where if they're donating something and they're filling out the form, that they say what they want that designated to?
Okay, we can do that. That's a good point.
And then, the last thing was, at the bottom, when it says, "Name a person to contact for information regarding the donation," just a suggestion that maybe ask for contact information if it's different from the above, is all I was thinking.
Councilmember Walton?
I think it kind of goes over what Councilmember Dill was saying in the donation description. It says, "Please describe what you would like to donate and where you would like it placed." Is that, are you saying that you want it to be a little bit more detailed, like we want it specifically to the police department, or we want it specifically to this department?
Well, I was just saying, because if it's designated donations, like if it's a fund, like if it's money, and someone says, "I want it to build, you know, to build the statue" or something, I'm just making that up.
Yeah, you could probably just kind of put it into that description section.
Okay. Good points.
Any other feedback tonight on the donation acceptance policy?
I'll be reviewing this with some of the other groups of the staff and the commissions, and bringing this back to council at a later date.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Move on to new business number six this evening, City Council Rules of Procedure. Paul?
There's been discussions that have take place at certain council meetings or among council members and myself regarding rules and procedures, and I feel that council members should be looking at the city council as a whole to ensure that we have efficient operation of our city and our meetings. In this document, are rules addressing meetings, agendas, minutes, parliamentary procedures, comments in relationship with city staff and consultants. This is a draft document of city council rules and procedure, and I'd like to get some feedback from council regarding what I've provided tonight, or what I've worked with staff, as well as our city attorney in preparing for you.
Councilmember Kurtswell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to make a suggestion, and I think, Paul, I had mentioned this to you before. I have several pages of comments, not to mention the markup copies that I have, and I was just wondering if we could have a special meeting on this and spend an evening, I don't know, get a pizza, sit up in a conference room, and sit down at a table, and just sit down and do nothing but focus on this, and give this our complete, total, one-hundred percent dedication and input, rather than a couple of minutes tonight. I think it's that important to spend the time on it.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree completely.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I don't know where your thoughts are on that, Paul.
I think at first, perhaps, maybe council members could provide feedback, not, doesn't necessarily have to be in this forum, but just as a, we discuss the budget every year, that council members could provide me the items that they're concerned about, some perhaps ways that we can improve it, or what their thoughts are on this document, provide that, gather them through the city clerk or myself, we'll prepare, we'll prepare that list, and we can either have that special meeting, or at least clarifies and kind of narrow down what everybody's looking at, and then you decide if you want to have that meeting or not. I mean, that's up for you, and all seven members to decide.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
The reason I think a special meeting would be good to start with is because, for me, I don't have too, I don't have problems with it, but I sure have a ton of clarification. And I think if we just sat down and talked about it, got your clarification on it, it would move a whole lot quicker. I'm looking at expediting this to some extent, and being as efficient as we can with resources, and just sit down, everybody, because a lot of it probably can be resolved just by discussing and saying, "Well, that's not exactly what I meant," but to be carrying it back and forth and back and forth, let's just sit down and get it done. You know, a couple hours with a couple pizzas and some pop will be done.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I don't have a problem, if it's okay with city council, that maybe you and I have a conference call or sit down and hash out those issues, and maybe we can come up with a revised version, and working with Paul and seeing if that would, I mean, it sounds like there's nothing glaring, and it's really just cleanup and clarification that you and I can do.
Well, I would like all of council to participate. I mean, I would like everybody to have an opportunity, because my interpretation of something may be very different, somebody may have different experiences, somebody may have some particular procedural bends. I'm looking at adding a couple things to this, and I think that this is something that us as a team should work on. I mean, that, that's how I'm looking at it. That's why I said pizza and some pop, and let's bring some jeans and an old sweater and knock it out.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. Well, speaking of the theme of team, I actually agree with a meeting and having a special meeting regarding it, where we can all hash it out. There's been several times where I've placed calls after meetings to the mayor, gone in to see the city manager, and just put in my two cents on certain points and things that happened during the meeting, that I don't want to hash out in front of the public. I just don't think that it needs to happen that way. So, I would really like to see us meet and have a nice meeting and work through it. I think this team up here really can get together and come up with some great plans, when given the chance to sit down and work together.
You need to go to Councilmember Richards, and I'll come to you. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I agree with Councilman Walton and Kurtswell, okay. I want to add something. I'm all for change, okay? I'm all for improvement of everything we do here in our procedures. But I went through this and dissected it, thinking in terms of the people that we represent, the general public that looks to us to make the right decisions. And if there was just one or two little things out of whack in this, I'd probably go along with it, but I've got at least ten things that really need to be looked at. It will hurt our mayor, hurt the people out there, in my opinion, is my opinion, and it just, it just needs to be a special meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Just a point of clarification, so that everyone's on the same page. If you're having a special meeting with, obviously, a quorum there, it would be a public meeting.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Right. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
No, that's the point I wanted to make. Councilmember Walton seemed to think it was going to be out of public view, but it would be definitely in public view for the comments that are going to be made.
Councilmember Kibble?
Oh, are you done, Steve?
I am.
Yeah, okay. I think it'd be helpful if we knew how many things are going to be bones of contention here. I mean, most of this stuff seems perfectly logical and reasonable, so I'm thinking, why don't we find out what are the complications here? That seems like a real no-brainer, that you start with trying to understand where you might end up having a divide.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I think that's, that's probably a pretty valid suggestion, Councilmember Kibble. I'd go back to what the city manager recommended initially, have each of the council members and the mayor provide their feedback, like they do on the budget, tell them what they agree with, what they disagree with, where they're looking for additional clarification. Let's see how big the elephant truly is.
Councilmember Walton?
I do stand corrected. I did not mean to say that we're not going to have the public available, but when we have this large of an agenda, and we have things to discuss, and I think that it could be a really long night, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, let's, oh.
Councilmember Kibble?
But it may not be. That's, I think that's the point, though. Mrs. Walton, we might end up only having a couple of things that we're scrapping on, and that could be handled, so.
So, let me just quickly comment on this. Are we thinking, like we do for the budget, we all go through this, make our opinions known to the city manager, and then we want to bring this back as an, as an action item on a shorter, on a shorter night? Is that?
Or at least a discussion on a shorter night, and, I mean, he can distill down, if there's, if there's primary consensus on most of this stuff, then we don't have to address those, but the things that are causing a mix-up, we can speak to directly.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And again, just to emphasize what Councilmember Kibble's saying, I mean, agree with that wholeheartedly, it becomes a rifle shot instead of a shotgun blast, as far as the approach.
Paul, do you have any feedback on that?
Well, I think you've all brought up valid points, and I think if, the recommendation that I made regarding writing some of these things down and getting them to me, I can kind of ascertain, working with the city clerk, how long potentially a meeting might need to be. So, if we are scheduling a special meeting, we say, "Hey, based upon what you wrote, it's going to be a four-hour meeting," or "Based upon this, it's going to take forty-five minutes on the agenda, and we can put it on an agenda where it's much fewer items are actually on the agenda," as Councilmember Walton had mentioned.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to that?
I mean, even if it were multi-meetings, you know, where, if we've got ten items, we do two of them a night or something until we work our way through this. Nothing has to happen overnight on this, so we've gone this long without it.
Okay. That will work. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So, if we're going to go there, Rob, do you have a proposed deadline for the initial feedback due?
I'd say thirty days, if you're looking at this, based upon comments that were made today. I mean, you obviously have holidays coming up, we're talking about budgets and a lot of other things. I don't put undue pressure. As mentioned, this was not a policy or procedures that has been in place before. It was just my idea regarding more efficient operations of the city, and something that we should strive to obtain.
Okay, so you would want our feedback by the end of the month? Is that what you're?
I said thirty days is fine. That's just my recommendation. So, you're not all working in on your, with your families on Christmas Eve, so we've got plenty of time.
Sorry, kids, no presents this year. I had to work.
That's good. All right. So, we'll move on to new business number seven this evening, consider canceling the December twenty-third, 2019 city council meeting. Paul?
I placed this number, this item on the agenda, because this has been discussed in prior years, and this was, this meeting was on Christmas Eve, you wasn't sure what anybody's plans are regarding travel or anything like that. It sounded like anything was pending, but if something does in fact come before us that needs to be addressed, I would alert city council and discussion regarding having this meeting, if in fact you decided to cancel this particular scheduled meeting.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. I'll make the motion to cancel the second city council meeting in December, scheduled for December twenty-third, 2019.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to cancel the second city council meeting in December, scheduled for December twenty-third, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things, three things, and they're all, well, one, the first thing I wanted to bring up is, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if anybody would be interested in having Andy Meisner come and speak to us regarding dealing with unfunded pension liability or OPEB issue, issues, also regarding alternative investment issues. I don't think we've ever had him speak. I have spoken to other people in other cities, and they felt that if he did come and speak, it'd be something they may even themselves want to attend, and thought that it was very progressive of South Line to listen to Andy Meisner and help us address some very, very important issues. But I want to get the mayor's approval, and let you direct the invitation.
Does anyone, does anyone have any, I don't think anyone has any objection to that. Paul?
If I may, Patricia and I have already discussed regarding having our meeting with the county regarding investment options. We're waiting, completing the information regarding the audit this year and other information regarding staffing levels, and with myself and the city clerk, or the city clerk treasurer, setting up that meeting with the county officials to discuss our investment options. I think I brought this up earlier in the year, that we would be doing that, so we have already outlined that, and we have discussed it, but we're just looking at trying to figure out what's the best date to do that. The other item regarding the unfunded pensions, I, I would caution as far as just going and bringing Andy Meisner in from the county, I'm not to say he's a good individual to talk with, but we have already had discussions with our auditors about looking at ways that we're going to proceed and move forward with that. I don't have any problem with bringing somebody in and having, you know, discussions on like how they handle things at the county or other jurisdictions or things like that, so that, I have no problem in doing that, if you want to, you know, bring him in at a particular meeting. I think, you know, we do have the staff and obviously working with our auditors to be able to prepare for that. We're looking at, you know, doing additional things with this upcoming year, because I know certain discussions have taken place at a prior budget meetings, as well as discussions during city council meetings. So, I think, you know, we're going to move forward on that, but I think bringing Andy in or someone at the county to talk about that, I think is, is okay to bring him, especially because I think it does, as you say, lets us, or lets the residents know, or whoever may know, that we feel that this is an important issue, and we're going to be working on it, and working with other officials who do in fact do this, you know, for a living, or handle multi-billion dollars instead of just multimillion-dollar municipalities.
Councilmember Kibble?
It also reminds Oakland County that we're still part of Oakland County, so.
And if you'd like, if you direct from council, if you, whether you want to vote or just if you're drawn in concurrence with that, Patricia and I will work on scheduling something like that with the county.
Okay.
Great. My next issue? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next question I have, and the reason I sort of asked Jesse to stay, is maybe you could talk to this, because this is a budget item. At the last time when you made the presentation regarding HRC and everything, there was that discussion about the pressure switch and the control valve, and so I'm saying, okay, we approved everything, but also I believe that you brought to our attention that that switch had been out for a while, and that they could take care of it and repairing it inside the DPW. So, I'm saying to myself, why are we not seeing that switch also being included? If we're going to be dipping into this fund, then why don't we get that switch and valve taken care of that I think has been out for more than three years, four years?
First, I'd like to say it's, it's a little more complicated than just a valve. It's not a valve like at McCatty Park, where I first, when I first started, I knew there was a bad valve. We had it knocked out. It was just a valve, a simple open, closed valve. This is nothing like that at all.
Okay.
And there's a lot of moving parts on this valve, and so the valve that was already there, that we were told was going to work, didn't work well very long. Okay? That, that's what I know about that valve, and I'm not just going to throw another one of that same exact valve right in there and have it not work after less than a year. That's, that's my take. If that makes sense.
So, what, which, so, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is you want to do your research to make sure that the pressure switch and the control valve, that you are going to put, and I think it's in well six?
That, that valve would actually be, it's actually at the water plant, it's actually in the water treatment plant on that site, in a pit, right in front of where the induced draft aerators are.
And is that the one that the state noticed when they were there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they, they knew of it and said, "We should probably do something about this valve," and it's just definitely in our radar now of, "We got to address it, we got to do something with it."
And what was their timetable for getting that done?
They really didn't give us one. They were more concerned about the fact that we needed to get number four A, which now we're calling number seven, online. That pump, at that point, was still not done. So, that was kind of priority one.
Okay, so you are pursuing, then, a solution for this issue?
Absolutely. Whether it be in part of the capital improvement plan or not, regardless, it's going to get addressed, for sure.
Do you think it'll get addressed soon, like in the next couple months? Because I just want, I just want to let you know, I'm going to approve it. I'm, I'm going to telegraph my vote right now.
I can assure you that both Doug and Ron Beeson are very well aware of what needs to be done there. Although HRC wasn't present with the sanitary survey visits that they endured with Eagle, there's no doubt in my mind that the pressure switch that is located in the wells off-site, along with the flow control valve that is right next to the water treatment plant itself, will need to be restored. will need to be restored to service. And I fully expect that to be listed as an immediate need when they issue their pending report. Regardless of that, I know that Mr. Beeson has looked into some parts. What we have offered to do is simply provide as-needed guidance on it. We designed the original one. I think, again, the control sequence is all there. It's just a matter of getting a new flow control valve over by the plant installed and reconnected to the pressure switch and then reprogrammed into the instrumentation and controls so it functions like it was originally designed. So that is one of the projects that Doug and Ron and DPW is going to do, but with our support. So again, he's got time for us built into his budgets to help out just for professional support when it comes to these, but that is a project that essentially he'll probably come back to and say, okay, I got a quote for the valve now and, and for the pressure switch and for the programming, and here's the contractors and here's the price to do it, and we need to get it done.
Okay, perfect.
So it's going to happen.
Okay, that, that answers everything for me. Everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything on the budget this evening?
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yes.
Merry Christmas, Jesse.
You too.
I don't know if everyone heard me. Did anyone else have anything on the budget this evening?
Excuse me.
I've listened.
Okay. We'll move on to the manager's report tonight.
In follow-up to that budget, I have received, started to receive some information from councilmembers regarding their goals and objectives, so those of you who haven't gotten those to me, please get to, get those to me within the next few weeks. Upcoming council agenda, we do have scheduled for next month, the Recreation Authority. This is going to be a part of a, what I'm planning on is some sort of monthly presentation that we'll have, whether we have consultants, auditors, cultural arts, historical society, library, Parks and Rec, senior center, whoever it may be, on a regular basis so we get the council more informed as well as the public more informed about activities that are going on within the city of South Lyon. I have, I want to make, recommend, or discussion regarding Cool Yule, the commitment that staff had for that event, the amount of hours, the amount of, I mean, it's, this year's particular event has kind of expanded threefold to compare it what, what it was in the past. And the amount of hours that people put in is, was just amazing and the phone calls, the people that came in, the DPW able to respond, the responsiveness of the police department, the fire department, dealing with everything that we had to deal with. Every event, everything that we do, when we talk about a project or something like that, always try to stress, stress is that we want to make this safe. Yeah, we talk about, you know, some mistakes that we make and, you know, documents and, you know, whether it's something, something that we wrote up, those things we can deal with. We can always make mistakes on things like that because nobody gets hurt, but we cannot make a mistake on an event, forget, forgetting to put up barricades, forgetting to put safety measures in place, for, you know, remembering how we're doing things and all the meetings that we have. And we had some real spirited conversations because we had disagreements on what we should do and how we should do it and the methods, but it worked out great. The effort that was put in by Bob, by Dana, by Jim, by Tim, by all the individuals a part of this particular event was fantastic. And I think this is turning into another community event that we're all going to be proud of and that people will want to come to South Lyon for within the future. So I say kudos to all those individuals. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone have anything else for Paul? With that, we'll move to reopen public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address. We will close public comment this evening and move on to council comments. Councilmember Kibble, why don't you start us off tonight?
All righty. All right, I'd ask everyone to keep in mind, this is the season to take extra time to recognize our blessings and remember, living in our, in this area makes, makes it very likely we're enjoying good fortune. Just, just look around at our beautiful community, the caring company we keep. There's, there's still a lot of work to be done in the city, but we have the people that are ready to tend to continue improving our circumstances. I just wanted to remind everyone, take note of our good times. Like to wish everybody a happy holiday. We live in a wonderful place and I'm very grateful for all the, the good people that work for us, with us, and the people that we're trying to take care of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank DPW for their incredible commitment to the city, actually this whole year. You know, it was raining today and work is still getting done. I mean, this is a group of gentlemen that work in 20 below weather, they work in the rain, and I just want people to remember that this is a very, very hard-working group of individuals. I just, you know, I care for each and every one of them. They're just good, good men. Additionally, please take the time to go through the city and look at all the Christmas lights. Jennifer Duncan at the Christmas house has all the lights up in all the windows in her house. It was absolutely stunning tonight. So please stop by, look at everything in the downtown. Everybody knows about the Christmas sub and that is Hidden Creek, and that's over on Nine Mile and Dixboro. Lit and the residents of, of Hidden Creek decorate their subdivision basically for those in the city to come and to drive through. And last, I want to thank all of our employees who have provided an incredible year for all of us here in the city. And I want to thank all of the people that have been good to the city and I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to absolutely everyone and we'll see you in January 2020 for probably a more incredible year than what we've had this year. So God bless everybody. Good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell? Councilmember Dilg?
I think I talked enough during the DDA thing, but I'll just quickly say, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, all the staff and the council and everybody else for welcoming me this year and answering all my questions and, and giving me the help that I need to get up to speed. And I just want to also say, in addition to everybody else that did such a great job, it was really great to see everybody from council downtown as well. That's, I think it's a really important thing for us to do is to, to get involved in the activities and make sure that we're seen and, and making a positive impact on the community. And just want to say happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Witch's Hat, who raised $2,300 for the Humane Society here on Valley on their Bark Friday event. It was on, held on the day after Thanksgiving and it was, you know, they always know how to good, throw a good fundraiser up there. One reminder of the season, as Councilmember Kibble posed, pointed out, we do have a very wonderful community. We are very lucky to live here and we should count our blessings, but I want to remind everybody, keep Facebook positive. I brought this up several times in the past. It's, keep it positive, pay it forward with kindness, let's just continue to sell our community, those who are out there looking to want to move to our community. We, we represent our community online and anytime we put an nasty comment out there, people are looking at it, so let's just avoid that altogether. And really, whatever your holiday traditions are, I hope you enjoy them. I hope you enjoy your family, your friends. Keep it safe and have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton? Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make some comments here and I hope it's the end of the year here for us and I appreciate what Mr. Councilman Kibble has said. We live in a great community here. I want to alert you to two new businesses that have moved into town that, that may not be open all the time just yet, but, and Councilman Kurtzwell may have mentioned one of them previously in a different context, but the DRC Real Estate Company is in the mall out there, Brookdale Mall, I believe they call it, okay, where, where the coin shop was, okay? And the other side of Verizon out there, there's a pharmacy. It's evidently independently owned because it doesn't have a, a chain name with it of any kind, and it says Home Pharmacy and Wellness. And the name of the owner that's building it is Shing, a common name that we know very well from other matters in the city. And both of these are brand new to me and I'm glad to see two new businesses move into town, okay? And I hope things go well for them. Also, I want to thank our DPW, like Ms. Kurtzwell said, okay, they put in a lot of overtime making this whole thing work and they still found time to fix a pothole for me that I complained about because it would certainly break my bicycle tire if I missed and missed my cue and hit it. Just happened to be one of those freak-type holes in the pavement. That's small potatoes compared to what they have on their agenda, especially with some people being sick. Can't say enough good things. Can't say enough good superlatives about the overall Cool Yule. Everybody else has covered it very well. Down at the first, I was there twice, okay? The first part of the day was actually in the noon time, down there at the bike shop where they have the reindeer and the elves. I just got a comment that that was the most beautiful animal, and I've been down there a lot, okay, that I've seen in years, okay? That particular reindeer, they only had one this time, but man, was it stunningly beautiful. They were offering, they were taking your picture if you wanted to get in it and they gave you, you were your family a picture with that reindeer. I thought that was very wonderful. Okay, and from the vantage point in the nighttime when I was working at the museum area, I was on, on the caboose, the platform of the caboose, and a band was right down below me. And that was such a wonderful thing to see the South Lyon band. I asked the kids, where are you guys from? Which school are you from? And they said, well, we're from South Lyon High, because I can't, I can't tell their uniforms in the dark, or they could be east as well as I know, but they were all South Lyon High. And the instruments that they were holding all had little LED lights on them. I have never seen that in my life at any time, anyplace, anywhere, and I thought it was unbelievable. Plus the lights that they had on their uniforms and, and over their headdresses and such. Amazing, okay? Added to the moment in the evening. And our mayor with his, his dedication and everything, I was around the corner. You didn't see me, but I was there, okay? And what, what a wonderful experience this was this time. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to recognize and thank Phyllis Poprovsky. She's our water billing clerk for her 32 years of service to this city and to wish her the very best in her retirement. She has certainly earned it and I know she'll be missed. Second, I'd like to, this past weekend, the Salem South Lyon District Library and the Coral Sash hosted their second annual tea and fashion event in cooperation with the Victoria Tea Salon. They had a capacity crowd of about 125 attendees and in addition to the tea and fashion show, they had a raffle for gift baskets that were donated by numerous businesses and individuals throughout our community. The entire event was held for the purpose of raising funds for the children's literacy project at the library, and while this year's results have not yet been tallied, last year's event raised about $3,000 for this initiative. Just one more example of our library doing so much to help our community's residents. I too want to just thank all the organizers, the volunteers, sponsors and participants who made this year's Cool Yule such a memorable event for our community. This is truly what makes our community so wonderful. And on that note, as everyone gathers with their friends and family during the coming weeks, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa, or in the words of Jerry Stiller from The Seinfeld Show, and I quote, "A happy Festivus for the rest of us." So have a great holiday and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Yeah, you can't say enough thank yous for the Cool Yule staff and the city staff. Incredible event, incredible to be able to be a part of that. That's small-town America at its finest. It was just a very cool thing to be able to be a part of and there's just, we could say thank you all night. There was a million people. Dana Johnston, that parade was awesome. You know, Jeff Heinonen and, and really, I mean, just, just everyone. I mean, the, the police department, fire department, all of our, all of our city employees. I'm looking forward to seeing you all tomorrow at our annual party and hopefully we can get caught up. You know, I hope everyone has a great holiday season. I'm looking forward to a big year in working with all of you in 2020 and moving the city forward. So I hope you all enjoy your holiday and rest up. We'll, we'll have a little bit of time off here and we'll be right back at it there in the beginning of January to keep doing what we're doing. All right? So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Have a great night.